So I'm. Thank you. Apologize for that. We're gonna call to order. Okay, this is a town of Andover Board of Selectmen Public Hearing. We're having this hearing to receive input on the final draft report of the Charter Revision Commission, which recommends four amendments to the charter. You all would have had access to the final draft report that was on the town website. So we're gonna get this meeting started at 7:05 today, which is the 27th of June. And so this meeting is to hear from the public. So I think the easiest way is for me to go around and call on people. So we'll start with Marcy Minor, who's right next to me. Marcy.
All right.
The floor is yours.
Oh, that's okay. I sent everyone an email, so I don't need to say anything else. Thank you.
Okay. Diane Granger. You're on mute. Diane, Diane, you're on mute.
There we go. Can everybody hear me now?
Now you gotta start all.
I have to start all over again. It was it was a great introduction, too.
It sounded awesome.
Thank you all, Board of Selectmen and the Committee for doing this. This is always a tough job. I am delighted to see that you only selected a few items on the charter rather than doing the whole charter. I think this is a good idea. Do smaller pieces more often and we can get something done rather than try to do the whole thing and nothing got stuck. So um, thank you for that. I think that's a great idea. I did have a couple of questions. And one is that. Oh, what is it? Paragraph three here or item, item two? Where it talks about the last item is that the town administrator shall devote full working time to the duties of the office. Does that mean he's on call other than what eight to five or seven to four, four, whatever he works? I thought Eric was on duty pretty much 24/7.
Well, we're not supposed to respond. You're supposed to make.
Okay, well, that was a concern. Okay. The other issue was the 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 last item where they talked about at least three selectmen to employ all these different people or at least three again to remove such people as you know, the town administrator, the building official, planning municipal agent and all those items. And I think three out of five is not enough. I would imagine it's difficult to get four to agree on anything, but I think something like this should be difficult. So I would like to see four out of five to be able to hire or remove somebody. And I'm very concerned about I had no problem with, you know, the town assessor and Animal Control Office, but the resident state trooper program. I don't think this should be left up to three people on the Board of Selectmen to remove the state trooper program. That that would have happened a couple of years back when the I think the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance was very upset and wanted it, but the residents wanted it. So I don't think it should be that easy. And I don't think the resident state trooper trooper program should be left up to three or four people.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else?
No, I think that that'll do me.
Okay, we'll go to Kimberly Purson.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Liz Lowkey. Okay, Liz, you're on mute if you're trying because I can't see you. But if you have nothing, I'll move on. Jay Chemis. Chemins, excuse me if I mispronounced that.
You got it, Jared. How you doing? Yeah, so thank you all for having this forum. I do want to just two concerns. The first one is to echo what Diane said about the the police officer. I think that would it would be prudent to have something a little bit more larger, a larger group of people to decide that as it's such a contentious issue. My main concern is the the item about bifurcation of the budget. I feel like again, this was, as we all know, very controversial and very very divisive topic. And while I certainly appreciate all the hard work that the Charter Committee made to try and make a series of very important changes. I think that this one is a misstep. Because as we know, there are a group of people in town that are very much trying to reduce the financial footprint of the school budget. And I think that this would be a a really useful tool for those people to perhaps be able to separate and then you know, get their way on that. And I think it's a misstep. And based on the very heated debates of last summer, I think that this should really be reconsidered.
Jay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Joanne Ebert.
No comment. Thank you. Just here to listen.
Liz, are you?
I'm back. Yeah, I couldn't find the app or the on my phone on my computer. Anyway, I could hear you, but I couldn't find it to respond. So I am here in support of the bifurcation, actually. I agree it is a divisive issue. But I think the town has spoken pretty loud and clear in the last couple of elections to indicate that they feel like the townspeople aren't being heard in terms of the the expenditures by the school, and it doesn't feel like the school is really working to try to help at all. And and I'm speaking as a mother and a grandmother, and I strongly support good schools. This is not about not wanting the school because I don't have children in the school. There was a time when I had my children in the school and the schools were supported. And speaking from someone in my, you know, role, I absolutely support the school. I just don't feel like the administration is transparent and that I think they can they can do things differently and make changes to help the town get what the town needs so that the town can get get things done. So that's all I have to say. And thank you all for all your work on it on the charter and on the bifurcation team. I know it's difficult, but I appreciate y'all.
Right. Thank you very much. Kim Mador. You have to unmute.
No comment right now. Thank you.
Okay, you got it. Cell phone 2345 is Attorney O'Brien, so we'll skip him.
Wow, we got it today.
Yes, I actually did some homework. I looked up his number. I can't remember my number, but I did look up his number. All right, Louise. Louise Goodwin, right?
Yes, may I ask a question?
This is supposed to be public comment. You can ask and we'll try to answer it in our later meeting.
Okay, I'm just curious if things do change and they become a part of the charter. Is there a timeframe that it stays in existence on the charter or can it be changed at any time again?
It can be changed at any time.
It can. Okay.
Yep.
No other comment. Thank you.
Maureen is here. George Elliott.
Okay, yeah, I have several questions and they relate to some of the things that have already been addressed. But first of all, and I think most importantly, our previous hearing, the live hearing that I couldn't attend because it was in person, the question was raised about what have been the outcomes of budget bifurcation? How many towns in in the state of Connecticut have bifurcated their town and educational budgets? We would actually be trifurcating it in this case since Ram is already separated out from the elementary school district. What has been the outcome? If you can't answer that question, you're just asking us to buy a pig in a poke. And based on feelings about the local Board of Education and its budget proposals. As they say, the question was previously raised, and I was really disappointed that there's been no presentation at this hearing that would address that question. So hold that thought. Second, I wonder why remove the requirement for higher education for the job description for the town administrator. It seems highly unlikely in this day and age, you're going to find a qualified candidate without higher education. And well, for example, a degree in biophysics doesn't necessarily prepare you for career as a town administrator. It does show a capacity for learning. And I would suggest that at very least, an associate degree in a related field would be a reasonable job requirement. I understand that education is still to be considered. But nevertheless, some minimum bar should be set for a high level position such as this one. I agree in general with the modification of section 702 to make it possible for the town to seek efficiencies either through combining staff jobs or shared surfaces with other municipalities. But I agree with Ms. Granger that putting the state trooper program in that paragraph seems a little excessive. We have gone through some budget hearings and budget votes that essentially rejected the idea of axing the resident state trooper program in order to save money. And I think the outcome has been at least twice since I've been here that that question has come up. So again, I would strongly recommend removing that. Now, as the veteran of three previous Charter Commissions, including the last one that failed because there were commissioners who couldn't make it to meetings. I do appreciate the service of the current commission and their prominence in doing the work and getting this report out for public hearing. That's all my comment, and I will again raise that question about can anybody address the actual outcomes of budget bifurcation in the towns that have adopted that?
George, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're gonna move on to Pat Moriarty.
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and the last individual on the call is a cell phone number 742-8585, I believe it is.
Yes, that's me, Joan Foran.
Hey, Joan.
Hello, everyone. I want to start by thanking the committee and the Board of Selectmen for this meeting. It's very informative, and I just want to state unequivocally, listening to George Elliott, I've already changed my mind on two issues. So that is why meetings like this are so important. I'd like to support the measure that has three fifths instead of four fifths in regard to the hiring and termination of a position. I do want clarification, though, in the language. So are are you removing the resident state trooper or the resident state trooper program? Because I could see an incidence where there may be concerns specifically with the trooper. And yet people still want to have the program. So at the discussion part with the Board of Selectmen, I asked them, or your board rather, not them, I apologize, to consider this question. The other thing in regard to comments made about the Board of Education, I do have concerns where people are commenting in a negative way, not with malice, but with a difference of opinion on funding on the Board of Ed. So my support is with the Board of Ed. And I know the perception has been at times, they have not been forthright. I disagree. I think their presentations have been well presented, and I think that Boards of Ed in general, in the way they develop their budgets, do it in a different manner than the town. And because of complex issues, it sometimes appears as they're not providing information, such as an objective budget and a subjective budget, how they're perceived in cost, revenue sharing, grants that are received. And so it is not a simple presentation as with the Board of Selectmen. I do have concerns, though, when we go through multiple referendums and the budget keeps getting defeated. So at a given point, we reduce budgets when we should not be contemplating those reductions, but do so on emotionality and misinformation. So I do support the charter revisions as done by the committee at this point. And again, I thank the committee for all their hard work. This is not an easy job. And I also want to thank the people that are at this hearing and a former Board of Ed member, George Elliott, for his clarity and substantive remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else who'd like to make any additional comments that I may have missed? So at this time, I guess, or I'm going to sit there and say that we are going to close this portion of the public hearing. And I believe we're scheduled, and I know we're scheduled for a meeting with the Charter Revision Committee, but Carol Lee appears to be the only member who's attended this meeting.
Erin Mador also.
Sorry, my fault. So Dennis, I will ask you.
Jeff.
Yes.
If I may intervene, the next item is actually a meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And there is an agenda for the the meeting, and it does include public comments. Okay, that is that is for the purpose of you members of the board deciding whether to approve the final report or to modify it anyway.
Okay.
That's sufficient?
That's. Yeah, but do we? I guess I think Jeff's question maybe is, do we need to get ahold of some people from the Charter Commission to get on this for the final meeting? If there is, because I mean, I personally feel like there may be some conversation here, so.
It's possible you won't need that meeting depending on what happens with this meeting.
Again, but so we be.
This meeting, this meeting is scheduled for a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the.
No, no, not this meeting. This this is this this.
The next. The next meeting is, yeah, the next meeting is us, and then the third meeting is them, or a joint meeting. We have to decide what we want to do and then ask them to either reject or ask for changes and then go from there.
Adrian is correct.
Adrian is correct. I did not see that in the calendar or.
Right on, Adrian.
Okay.
And you know, given some of the comments here, I think we definitely probably want to try to get some Charter Commission members together to be ready to be on a a meeting so we can make some recommendations.
Well, the only thing that Dennis I would ask is is, I'm not sure it was posted that way, Dennis. So.
Well, it was. It's a little confusing, but I went to the town website today, and there are three different agendas.
There's. Where's the other agenda? Someone tell me that, because I'm missing it.
I don't think I think. I'm looking at the calendar, and I think it was. I think it may have been posted on the calendar incorrectly. I think.
The Board of Selectmen meeting is is not is next.
Right, it is posted on the town calendar.
Yeah, it's just it doesn't. Only two of the meetings are showing up, not the third one in the calendar. Maybe if I click on that day and see.
So if you go to the note that says Board of Selectmen and Charter Revision Commission Special Meeting, there are two related agendas on there. One agenda says Board of Selectmen Special Meeting Agenda After Public Hearing. If you click on that one, that is the agenda for the next meeting that is underway.
All right, so we I just want to make sure we noticed correctly. That's all. As well. Um. Carol Lee, can you reach out to some of your partner? Can you reach out to some of your so that we?
I will text them.
Yeah, we need a quorum, so.
All right.
Of your board.
Eric, can you send me the agenda? I'm having problems following the second, the just. It would be faster if I just shared my screen and showed the agenda. Share your screen.
If you click on the if you click on that lower one and then go down to related agenda, there are two listed. Yes.
Okay, that should be the agenda. Okay, so we're going now call to order the town of Andover Board of Selectmen Special Meeting for Monday, June 27 at 7:28. With we're start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
One nation under God, indivisible.
Okay, and we're going to go back through the same cycle of public speak. So I'm not sure that everybody would like to participate. So Eric, if you can, one. One second, Eric. Okay, Eric, you can pull that down for now. So I can see everybody that's on the screen. There we go. Okay, so we're going to our meeting and our second item of order is public speak. So I will quickly go through and sit there and see if everyone would like to comment again, and I'm not sure that you will before we discuss. You may want to end. I'll tell you what, I'm going to make a motion that we move public speak to the end of this meeting. It's a special meeting. Can I do that? Dennis, I can't do that, can I?
All right. Meeting, no.
Yeah, all right. So I'll go quick. George Elliott. You can say no, George.
Yeah. My hand and unmute, and that takes two separate operations with. Okay, so I know that the both of the proposed meetings to be held after the hearing are underlying emphatically only if need be. And therefore, I wonder, you know, who's getting their socks on over their shoes in the sense that if the Charter Commission is going to meet, should they be receiving instruction from the Board of Selectmen based on the hearing regarding possible modification of the draft Charter Revisions? Or should the Charter Commission be proactive in listening to the public and proposing revisions to the selection prior to their meeting? We got a chicken and egg type situation here. I just wonder how y'all are gonna sort it.
Well, I would tell you, George, what we're going to try to do is we listened to the members of the community had, and we were hoping that we would be able to communicate directly to the Charter Commission and tell them what we may want them to to do, if anything, as a board. So.
Well, so I can I answer George's question? So so George, the the.
Yes, I did.
And we'll know this because the statute actually says that it's supposed to come back to the Board of Selectmen. We're supposed to accept or reject item of item or text and then make 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 us make our statement or recommendations to the Charter Commission to to look at things if they'd be willing. And then they have the option to be there accepting those changes and trying to put them into their document or or saying no and giving it back to us the way it was. So we're at that stage. So it's got to come to, we would have to make suggestions because they've already had their public hearing. They they unfortunately sounds like maybe didn't get some of the things. Some of the recommendations that were made here tonight, they didn't get that input. So so now it's up to us to to bring that input back to them and say, we've gotten it. Although you didn't, would you please look at these things? So does that answer your questions, George? Thank you.
All right, Diane Granger.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Jay Chemis.
I'm outside at this time. Thank you.
Joanne Ebert. Okay, Marcy Minor. Okay, she's good. Liz Lowkey.
Yeah, so since this is a separate meeting, I just want to go on record as saying that I do support the bifurcation. And I understand that in the charter, it's written that it would go to a separate vote if it failed the first time. So I think that is a nice compromise. It's not what I kind of expected when I voted for bifurcation, but I think that's a nice compromise. So just wanted to get that on record. Thanks, everyone.
Kimberly Purson.
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Louise Goodwin.
All set. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to item three, discussion and action on the final draft report of the Charter Revision Commission, including. Well, that's the wrong one. I apologize. Hold on. I took a picture of it. Discussion and possible possible action upon the final draft report of the Charter Revision Commission, including citizens who have received immediate proceeding public hearing. Alright, it is the same thing. I'm. Little bit slight with the, uh, the agendas. So item three, other members of the Board of Selectmen, who has comments related to. The final draft report that we've had in relation to the. Citizens' comments. Anybody like to go first?
Um. I can say that I, I hadn't read the, um. I hadn't read the section on the state trooper, the way that it's been kind of perceived. I read it as, you know, a, a recommendation for asking the trooper to be removed, not the trooper program, so. Um, I certainly think we maybe, my personal take is that I think we need to look at making that a four, a four-fifths. Um, if, if we're talking about a program concern, um. But. I mean, I guess the other thing is though, is that. Really, that's not in our purview. It actually falls in the Board of Finance's purview for. The only way to get rid of it would be to actually to remove it from the budget. I don't think that the selectmen actually engage or disengage that. I know when I was on the Board of Finance, that's when it came up over there as a cost-saving measure, so. And the Board of Selectmen didn't really necessarily have a direct line of say in it, so. I'm sort of torn as to how we address that. I think we need to address it, but I'm not sure. You know, I wonder if we just take it out completely and don't address it there within the Charter. You know, maybe that's the solution, because it really isn't, I don't think it should be one. Board or another voting for that. I think that's really a townwide issue. You know, it was adjusted at a town meeting the last time, so, you know.
Yeah, Adrian, I would agree with you on that. I think that should just be a budget line item. And that would fall under the bifurcation. If people didn't want the trooper or wanted the trooper, they could vote yes or no.
Okay.
Well, if we're going to discuss that entire section, let's go to the three fifths on all. All employee issues.
I, I think I'm generally okay on the, with the three fifths. On the other employee positions, because I don't think there is, I don't think there as, I don't, we're talking, we're not talking about executive level positions for the most part, you know. Um, I think actually in most cases, those recommendations are going to be coming from the town administrator. You know, those aren't people we deal with directly on a data basis, so, you know.
Okay, um.
That's my own personal take, but.
So that.
I would agree with Adrian's viewpoint on that as well.
So just so we understand, so it's, it's listed as the town assessor, the building official, the municipal agent for aging, the director of health. Animal control officer, tree warden, sanitary, sanitary and wetlands enforcement officer, treasurer, town attorney, zoning enforcement officer, town engineer. And we're going to ask them to eliminate the issues related to police services such as the resident state trooper program. So is that our request? Is they eliminate that entire section, police service such as resident state trooper program?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I just got a. Currently, the Charter actually doesn't address it. Um, it isn't protected by, by any number of votes. It simply says that the town may utilize the services. It doesn't say, doesn't say they have, it doesn't say they have to, it doesn't say they. They have to vote a certain way to get rid of it, right? So. So maybe we could just pull that one, that one section out on the trooper. And leave it the way it currently is in the Charter.
So sections, section seven oh one relates to the removal of the town administrator. Where are they putting this? Section seven oh one of the Charter and section seven oh two.
Well, you're stripping, you're stripping out and replacing the protected provisions. Unfortunately, I am on a. I'm on a phone here, so let me see if I can pull it up on a regular computer. My internet was not working right now, so I'm throwing. I'm throwing phone service to my laptop to try to do this, um.
Uh, and Carol, I, I will ask, well, I can't ask Carol this, so forget it. Uh, Dennis, I will ask.
Why, why stop? Why can't you ask Carol? She's on the call, isn't she?
She is, um, Carol, was it the committee's, uh. Intend to strike the entire section seven oh one E and seven oh two administrative positions, positions and replace it with this, this information?
Yes, we intended on striking the entire section seven zero two of the administrative positions. And just identify that the Board of Selectmen may appoint the following positions, which gave. Flexibility for you to regionalize or use joint services. Though we did not, we missed the four-fifth vote in the. Town administrator description. But all the others, we took that out and needed three, a minimum of three select. So in the event that the Board of Selectmen was reduced by one member to four. If one wasn't showing up or anything like that, then this way it wouldn't cripple the Board of Selectmen if they had to. Do something as far as one of the positions.
So, so Carol, if we, if we were to just strip the, the, the portion about the, the resident trooper out, it's already addressed somewhere else in the Charter, so we, we'd be okay?
Actually, it is addressed in section seven zero two, so we would have to put. A second line in there so we could do as the current Charter is section zero, seven zero two administrative positions. We could do part A. Which identifies all the positions that the Board of Selectmen may appoint, and then we could do part B. And just mimic what it says under line L of seven zero two, which states, police service. The town may utilize the services of the resident state trooper program.
Okay. Okay. So I would, do we, do we make motions in this, Jeff, or how do we move this forward?
Can I, can I make a clarification here, please?
Please.
There, there's no, nothing taken out of here about the town administrator. I heard that mentioned before. This does not, this, this part does not apply to the town administrator at all. Or the town administrator position. All it does, if you have your Charter sections in front of you, and you may not. Section seven oh one of the Charter has two paragraphs. And all this does is replace the first paragraph, which is very general language about all these positions. And replace it with the paragraph that is in the, uh, draft report. That's all it does. Doesn't, doesn't address the town administrator at all. Okay, only positions that are, that are listed, and that includes, of course, currently, police services, which might be the resident trooper, as you've been saying.
So you're saying item four replaces section seven oh one general?
The paragraph one of seven oh one.
Okay.
I can read it to you if you want. Maybe Eric can bring it up on the screen.
I have it in front of me, but I just want, I mean, it would be good to put it, you could put it up in front of everybody, that would be great.
It's a general paragraph. It basically says you need four votes rather than three. You need competitive examination, which that's being eliminated. For all of these, all of these offices, because it's never been, it's not been done. And, uh. That's about it. But it does not apply to the town administrator. Town administrator is in section seven oh one A. Seven oh one B and et cetera. Just want to clarify that.
Yeah, no, thank you. Eric, do you have that available or?
I have the draft document. I can pull up the Charter. I don't have the Charter open at the moment. Which, which. Do you want? Do you want the Charter?
Pull up the Charter, pull up the Charter.
Okay.
Alright.
Section seven oh one, that's it. Only two paragraphs.
Sorry, I'm being distracted. There's a fawn on my back deck.
Well, it's not in season, so leave it alone.
I'm not having a lot of luck pulling it up at the moment.
I can read it to you.
I'll read it, Dennis. Section seven oh one general with the, and this is how the Charter is currently written, so I, I'm assuming that, that. Let's ask a general question. Do all the individuals on this call and all the members of the board have the, the final draft, right? If it has the final draft, we're all good with the final draft, so I'm going to read the first paragraph of section seven oh one general under chapter seven administrative officers. With the exception of seven oh two, oh, town clerk, which is an elected position, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint and, as necessary, remove. The administrative officers provided for in section seven oh two by the methods and manners contained in each subsection. Appointments shall be made through competitive examination. In this competitive examination process, screening interview committee made up of incumbents from other towns of the office to be appointed shall be assigned to determine qualified candidates. The competitive exam process may be modified as necessary by majority vote of the Board of Selectmen after holding a public hearing. And modifications shall be recorded with the, with the office of the town clerk. So that is the paragraph that is. The, the committee in the final draft is requesting be removed. That is correct, Attorney O'Brien, right?
That is correct, and also, uh, there's a whole list of the positions. And their qualifications and all kinds of other good stuff about those positions, and that is all being removed as well, and they're simply being listed. To give the, uh, Board of Selectmen, um, flexibility. In this regard, and I think this was one of the items that was recommended to be looked at by the, uh, Board of Selectmen when we started this process.
Well, I mean, it just from what I read, I mean, we're not doing all of those. Functions within the Charter. I mean, the town does not have a significant competitive examination process that goes through, so. Removal of that is not really. An issue, so you're, you're replacing it, just so I get it, and I read this to everybody, you're replacing it with, in the best interest of the people. And the town of Andover, by vote of at least three selectmen, the Board of Selectmen may employ, appoint or contract with qualified persons. Or entities to perform the duties of the following requisite administrative positions, offices or departments in a manner that is consistent with the powers and duties conferred. And imposed upon them by the general statutes and ordinances of the town. And also by a minimum of three votes, remove any such person or entity from any such position, office or department, subject to any applicable provision of the town, of Andover personnel policies. Or any collective bargaining agreement or other contract. And then it lists the individuals, the town assessor, the building official, the municipal agent for the aging, director of health, animal control officer, tree warden, sanitary and wetlands enforcement officer, treasurer. Town attorney, zoning enforcement officer, town engineer, police services such as resident state trooper program, public works supervisor and tax clerk. So that's what you were being told to replace it, so I'm assuming that we as a board would sit there and say. Remove the section related to police service such as the resident state trooper.
Correct.
Is everybody in agreement with passing that back on to the Charter Revision Commission?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Dennis, just to be clear, do we need to make motions and vote on these things, or what, what is the?
I think, I think you should, I think you should vote in favor of, uh, I, this item number four. In, in the, in the list of, uh. The list of proposals on the final report. And you should vote in favor of it with a, as amended, and the amendment is as you stated.
Okay.
Yes, I think you should.
I, we can just make a motion to approve with the exception. Of the removed or of the resident trooper program.
Which was basically my question. Do we make a motion? I, yeah, I don't remember the process because I wasn't on the Board of Selectmen.
I already, I already wrote one up.
Go ahead, make the motion.
Motion to approve the Charter Revision Commission's changes to the Charter, except for the removal of the resident trooper program.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Alright, we, we need to talk about some of the other stuff.
Yeah, just this section.
Good, good move, Scott, I like it.
That, that's item number four on the final draft report. You started with the last one.
We did, we got down to the last.
Selectmen, you can do that.
Okay. Scott, would you like to revise that motion?
No, I'm not.
You don't want to revise it?
No, I'm good with it, just the way it is.
Okay.
Well, why don't we hold the motion then and we'll move forward.
Alright, let's talk about, so, but, since we're on item four, I just want to be clear, so we're all clear. The town of, town administrator is still a four-fifth vote. Of, or a point, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just so everybody is made aware and we put that one out there. Alright, so why don't we talk about item, um. Well, it's not item one.
There's a numbering problem on this list, which I tried to correct at your last Board of Selectmen meeting. And the, uh, item one. Item, there's a, there's a, a, an introductory paragraph that starts in full satisfaction.
Yeah.
The next paragraph is paragraph one. It should be one, but it's not numbered.
Alright, so we're going to go to the, the first section.
Final sentences of both.
Jeff, the only reason I said that was because the rest of these, we have been over and didn't have any problem with any of it.
That's okay, let's, let's go over them, Scott. If we're here and we're taking our time, we may as well sit there and have some conversations, so.
So item one, item one then is the, is the item on the, um, bifurcation budget after either a. Oh, uh, a referendum defeat or, uh, or, uh, a second defeat at a town meeting.
Okay, so we're going to go by section, so we're going to go section eight oh, this relates to section eight oh three C and eight oh three D of the current Charter. Eight oh three. And this one, um. Talks about our, I'll read it, it's quick, if a quorum is not present, the meeting shall be recessed to the same day of the following week. If a quorum is not present at the second town meeting of the budget, the budget shall automatically be put to referendum on the first Tuesday following the next Monday. If a majority of those voting at the referendum shall vote yes, then the budget will stand approved. If a majority of those voting at the referendum shall vote no, then the proposed budget shall be returned to the Board of Finance. Which shall review the rejected budget and shall present the same, present the same or revised budget to the town meeting to be held on the next succeeding Tuesday. And then eight oh three D is if a quorum is present at the succeeding town meeting on the rejected budget, the town meeting may proceed. If a quorum is not present, the budget shall be put to a referendum on the Tuesday following the next Monday. The same adoption cycles will be followed. If the budget is rejected at a town meeting or referendum until a budget is finally adopted. Alright, so now the revision to that is removing that, the final sentences of both section eight oh three C and eight oh three D. And replacing it, if, if the budget is defeated at a first referendum or for a second time at town meeting. The budget will be bifurcated into separate votes on the town budget and on the local Board of Education budget individually. And the process shall begin again with the Board of Finance as set forth in section eight oh three B above. And continue until each bifurcated budget is passed. If only one of the two bifurcated budgets is passed, it is final and may be implemented for the new. If only one of the two bifurcated budgets is passed, it is final and may be implemented for the new fiscal year. But the process must continue for any failed budget until it is passed. Okay?
That's good.
That's it. So we've all we've all discussed or had the previous discussions related to this. So let's just sit there and so the concept is to sit there and have an initial vote for the town budget. And if if it passes on the first go around, then they're not bifurcated. But if it fails on the first go around, it then becomes bifurcated. It's basically the logic. Is that the logic?
Or if it fails, two town meetings in a row or two town meetings period.
Two town meetings is the key.
So two town meetings or a referendum.
Correct.
Two town meetings is the key, yeah. It's already been through one meeting and a referendum. It goes through another meeting and it fails again. Then it goes to a bifurcation process.
I don't think that's how it's written.
Yeah.
So it it says if the budget is defeated at a first referendum or for a second time at town meeting.
Yeah, because the the budget does not go to referendum unless it passes the town meeting first.
Okay.
So it has to, so it has to pass. It either has to be one, so for clarification, it fails to go to referendum because it's failed two town meetings. Or if at its first referendum it fails, then it gets bifurcated. So then the question becomes, what happens if it? Okay, yeah, no, all right, it works.
When I first looked at this, Adrian, I had I had to think about it real hard because it is a little complicated because you have a complicated system. You cannot get the referendum without passing a town meeting. But this was not, you know, something I dreamed up. I I I helped the town, the Charter Commission put this into uh well, final form, let's say. It was put, they put it into writing and I helped put it into final form.
Okay, so let let's just discuss this and just like Adrian was trying to do. Let's use our current example for our current year. We went to town meeting the first time and I am getting my years confused, but I believe we passed the first town meeting. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And it went to vote and we failed.
Correct.
At that point in time, the budget would now be bifurcated after the first referendum.
Correct.
Because it failed.
Correct.
All right. And at that point in time, the Board of Finance would have two different budgets to put on to the next ballot or the next referendum. It would be split in two different votes. We would now have a second referendum that had two items on ballot. Yes or no on the town budget and yes or no on the Board of. Okay.
And Jeff, I think that, I mean, I've heard a lot of stuff going against like this is an attack on the school. I don't find it an attack on the school. I think the Bo- Board of Finance has a hard job sometimes trying to figure out what to cut and where. And you know, if this failed at referendum once, I mean, I I wouldn't put it past the Board of Finance just to put it in a referendum and just split it. And if it passes one or it fails another, then you know, I mean, we could be asking for a fire truck or something and the town just balks and says no to the town budget and yes to the school budget. It could go either way.
Well, I mean, candidly, Jeff, my own personal take on this, if this had been in play this year, I think the school budget would have passed and the town budget would have failed.
Yeah, that could have been a possibility. I mean.
But I mean, you, but if you look at the numbers, our town budget was asking for a massive increase this year. You know, we were.
I understand that, yeah. But the problem is, I mean, we always we put this on the, we put this on the Board of Finance and they just have to kind of make these random cuts.
I I know. I mean, I was.
Try to make it pass. And I I think maybe one sticking issue, and I think this helps the town generally figure out what the sticking issue is and deal with it by bifurcations.
I was a little frustrated with the Board of Finance's methodology this year of cutting cutting the, you know, cutting the Board of Education budget sort of randomly. I I know it wasn't random. I think they had some sort of like two to one methodology, but um it was a little frustrating to watch the school budget get get bu- get cut when, you know, you know, you're looking at really the big numbers on the town side, but and I don't, you you assume, I guess, in in those numbers that that's that was what the rejection was, but you know, even asking for yes or no questions didn't clarify it, you know?
Correct. And I mean, I think this just makes everybody's job a lot easier in the long run.
Well, I think in in years that, because we're going to have a year here where we're coming up very soon, where we're asking for a fire truck.
Exactly, exactly.
Shouldn't, it shouldn't be that the school budget gets cut because the town is asking for, you know, a million dollar bond.
Yeah, I know. And I don't think this is just, I mean, I don't think this is an issue with the school at all. I think it could be either way. It could be a town budget issue or it could be a school budget issue. I just think that's.
Can I, can I address one other thing on this? So there is looking at this, one of the things that Mr. Knox brought up, which I think was a very valid point, was about conversation. Is is he still on the call? Did we lose him? About whether this has been studied or not. There there was a study done when Hebron was considering doing it. You know, they got survey, they tried to survey all hundred and sixty nine towns. Um, they received responses from sixty five of those towns. Um, and twenty one of the towns that they received answers from were towns that bifurcate and forty four towns that do not. Um, and what what was found was that really towns that bifurcated didn't go back. And if you did this, if you look at the survey, um it is out there. It's a, it's under the the house dams dot gov website. It's, there was no real, there was no conclusion that it helped or hurt, but every town that did it seemed to have an opinion one way or the other. So like half the towns loved it, half the towns hated it. It just, there was no rhyme or reason to whether it helped or hurt. Um, and when you couldn't get, you literally, if you read the study, they they couldn't come up. It was, it was literally neutral. But towns that did it for very specific reasons seemed happy with it. Towns that did it sort of haphazardly seemed to have more of an issue. Um, I know my concern with it is that I think we have to get better as a town at the two, the school and the and the town having conversations about what their budgets are going to look like in the coming year. Um, you know, so that, you know, like the the year that the school needs a parking lot, say, for instance, or something bigger. Or let's say that we have a population increase and we need three teachers over at the school. Then we're going to have to look at the town budget and say, listen, you know, we probably need a pretty lean budget to get it passed. You know, otherwise we're going to get into this bifurcation issue. I think that could be the benefit of it. I don't know. I, you know, I think everyone has their own personal opinion on this. Um, I think it can go either way. I think it's how we react to it as a town is going to be whether this works well or not personally.
Yeah, but Adrian, didn't the, didn't the town over, I mean, I don't, I forgot what the the percentage was, but the town overwhelmingly voted for this, correct?
Yes, I mean, they did, but you know, there has been some argument, valid or not, that that the reason that the town overwhelmingly voted for this was, you know, um you know, that that it was, it was a heated discussion year and there was some back and forth and, you know. Um, but yeah, when you look at the numbers, it was like uh four twenty one yes and and two twenty nine no, so.
Two twenty four.
Two twenty four, is that what it was? So.
I mean, it was over two to one. I mean, it was a, it was a pretty substantial margin.
My my issue with bifurcation in general is that it just throws a wedge up between the community and the school. And I just don't, I particularly have a I have a problem with that because I mean, I understand the reason to bifurcate. I do. I do understand the logic. But I really do think we we operate in a very bad situation where where it's um it's one community and as a community, we provide services that are town oriented and we provide services for education.
Yeah, but I I I I agree with you, but like this year is a perfect example of why this might be a good idea. You know, the arbitrary cutting of the school budget, you know, really wasn't a great thing, you know? And and it wasn't, especially when the bigger increases were on the town side. And the budget failing, I think, was simply just a big number and not, well, I don't think it was something specific. I mean, if you look at the the yes.
I I think you can spin it whenever when you want, Adrian. I don't believe that. I think that there is a significant amount of 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 community venom directed at the Board of Education and the school system that, you know, misplaced or not, I just think it's just going to increase.
So how do you, so how do you decrease it then? I mean, if this isn't, if this isn't the solution, then what?
No, I don't, I don't disagree and I and I'm not sitting there negatively saying it shouldn't be bifurcated. What I'm saying is we as a community and is, it really comes down to how information is presented. And if information is presented in an appropriate way, then everybody will sit there and and accept it. I mean, to be really honest, that this board may have put forth a large budget, but there's nothing in our budget that didn't need to get done. You know, you can spin it out.
I'm disagreeing with that either, but but how, you know, our our problem in this town, personally, I believe, on the school and on the town side is always bad messaging. How do we get people to engage? I mean, you know, it it the riveries goes to every single, every single resident in town on a Friday. But if you take a survey of residents, you know, maybe ten percent of them actually read, some of them read letters to that, but the other, the other ten percent don't even bother reading the Andover section. They never even pick up on the things that are in there. So how do we messaging? And we've tried everything, Jeff. We've tried the, you know, we definitely have tried, you know, the Facebook pages of this and that. How do we get more residents involved? Well, that is really the crux of the problem.
Time, you know, time and again, every budget season, Jeff, it comes up with the same situation that at the beginning of the budget season, we're saying, no, a budget season's coming up. Here we go. We're going to be a big argument for the whole season. We get to the end, we muddle our way through it, and we still don't know what happened. This is the only way that we're going to know. We're going to find out. We have to do something different. Can't keep doing the same thing over and over again. It's not, it's not, it's not working. We're not, we're not getting any information, just like Adrian's saying. We don't know where the problems lie. We have to change something. That's my opinion.
Because the same people that show up at town meetings are not the same people that show up on on the day we vote.
Well, you know, and honestly, I I'll be candid. I'm I wished in some way that we had addressed that. I I personally think we should eliminate the the town, the town meeting method and go directly to voting because it it's so frustrates me that a very small majority can cut budgets excruciatingly painfully um at a town meeting or reject a budget at a town meeting. And they, and you know, you may have seventy people there, you know, in 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 a town where we have, you know, if, you know, over three thousand voters and seventy people can kill a budget. It's that's, that's a hard thing to to deal with, you know?
I apologize for the interruption, but is is this the part where we can't um make any comments?
You can, you can come back and public speak and we'll be, we'll be there quickly. I I promise.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, so.
If you, if I would say to, I would say to Jay, if you have something, feel free to throw it in the chat. We can at least take a look at it there.
You bet.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. That sounds good.
I just, I just, it is a, you know, it's it's one pot of money. That's all it is. It's.
I think we all, the question is, how do we, how do we get it through the with the lea- the least painful way? I mean, you know, four budget referendums is nuts. I mean, and it's, it's not just us. Look at Bolton. Bolton's having to vote again on July, July twelve. Yeah, they're still not done.
And then the other thing, Adrian, is we keep going through this and we keep making cuts and we may be making cuts to the wrong places.
The wrong places every time, maybe.
Well, it could be. Because we're guessing, we're guessing every time where we're going to cut and what we're going to get to pass. And I think if we can just slice the pie in half and say, okay, we need to work on this side or work on that side. It's, it's just a lot easier. It could be the town side, it could be the school side, who knows?
We need answers.
No, no.
We're not getting.
Well, I think the other part that's not mentioned enough is that there's also a very large part of our budget that we seemingly have no control over. I mean,
Exactly, yeah.
Ram is, ram is, you know, we're two votes on eleven number board over there, no? So.
Okay. So now we'll move to the item that is labeled one. The following should be inserted into the charter as a new section eight oh three G. So it's a new section. Should any budget fail to gain a final approval prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year, the town must implement a substitute for any such failed budget at the beginning of the fiscal year pursuant to general statute section seven dash four oh five and twelve dash one twenty three and the court cases decided they're under. And in the case of the Board of Education budget in compliance with the minimum budget requirement, MBR stating. So.
Yeah, Jeff, that is something that I recommended to the um Charter Revision Commission because in the past I've been asked over and over again, whenever we come up against this problem, the same question, not since we've had a town administrator, but before that, as to what we do if we don't pass a budget in time for the um end of the fiscal year. And the answer is, it's governed by those statutes and a couple of cases. And uh I thought it would be a good thing just sticking in the charter. Because it just covers you with, especially when you're in a situation now. If you're going to go to a bifurcated budget, it's possible that you may have one budget pass before the end of the fiscal year and the other one not pass. So you're going to have to follow the state statutes on that.
Okay, so just, just let's sit there and say the town budget did not pass. What, who's implementing the substitute? Is it the?
Board.
Board of Finance?
Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen will have to implement a substitute budget for the one that doesn't pass. By by issuing a a a mill rate for that particular budget. That is going to be complicated.
Is it based on?
You'll figure it out.
Yeah, but George, I I I'm sorry, uh uh Dennis, isn't that taken, is is that correct? I mean, you can override the Board of Finance. Wouldn't that fall to the Board of Finance's purview?
If a budget doesn't pass by the end of the fiscal year, the but the statute gives the power to create the mill rate to the Board of Selectmen. They can certainly do it on the basis of a recommendation from the Board of Finance, which might be wise.
But isn't the Board, but it's the Board of Finance's statute or responsibility to set a finance rate, not the, not the, not the.
Not if you don't have, not if you don't have a budget before, before a new fiscal year begins.
Okay, so here's a question. Is this forcing us to do that or allowing us to do that?
No, it's forcing you to do it. State, state law.
So we don't have a choice on this?
Well, you can, you have a choice of take, of not putting it in the charter, but uh but if I'm still town attorney and it comes up, I'm still going to write an opinion based on those statutes.
No, I just, I I just have a problem with taking away the power from the Board of Finance. And you know, I understand the fiscal year and I understand the tax collection and all the complicated BS that goes around it. I've been in this long enough to figure that out, but like, as the town, I don't, I don't, I'm not okay with that, I guess.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, take it up with the legislature. I I have, you know, in in fact, Adrian, in the past, when Bob Burbank was first selectman, I think it happened once or maybe twice. We didn't have a budget uh by the end of the first, by the end of the fiscal year and uh in fact, the Board of Selectmen did set the mill rate. But that was for a, that was not for a bifurcated budget. It was a little simpler.
Okay. Adrian, the Board of Selectmen set the mill rate last fiscal year.
Right. I believe so, yes.
That's right.
That's right, Eric.
I mean, I don't have. Dennis, one second. I have no problem setting it. What I'm saying is, are we going to give any guidance as to what it should be set at? I mean, are we?
Yeah, I I mean, and we did it last year with, you know, with guidance from the Board of Finance, right? So I, my concern is taking, I don't want to put it in the charter where if you you get, if you get a Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen that are not on good terms. I mean, I I've been there as a Board of Finance member when we had a Board of Selectmen that we were not getting along with for a variety of reasons. And you know, I don't, I just really think that it should be under the advisement of the Board of Finance if we're going to put it in there.
Well, maybe you shouldn't put it in at all, Adrian. I I just, I just threw it in as a kind of a token.
No, I know, but I you know, these things can be.
Mainly because I, you know, I was, you know, it it piqued my interest because of the bifurcation in the uh proposal, which makes it a little bit more complicated.
Okay, so this, just so we all understand, let's. Okay, so this, just so we all understand, let's sit there and say that the Board of Education budget, it, it, you know, we went through bifurcation, the town budget got approved and the Board of Education budget did not get approved. It goes all the way through June and it has not been approved. We're to set a mill rate for the community based upon the prior year budget or based upon, you know, a budget number for the Board of Education that we pick out. Just explain it.
It, it, it's supposed to be a budget that enables you the town to meet your expenses in the foreseeable future after the beginning of the fiscal year when you have no budget. So it would be a combination of, you know, you, you'd almost have to work together with the Board of Finance, because they'd have control over the mill rate on the budget that passed. This is just in the breakdown situation. But we've had it happen.
It just happened.
Yes. I mean, you know, I don't.
Wha- what do you mean it just happens?
Last year.
We had a, we had, we failed, we did not have a budget when the.
Where to select.
It was a unified budget though that failed. It was both town and Board of.
So for the record, what happened last year is I asked the Board of Finance to recommend to the Board of Selectmen a proposed mill rate. They did so, but Board of Selectmen was the entity that approved that mill rate uh, to be official.
A very rational approach indeed.
So can we codify that? Is there anything against us codifying that in the charter? Per your recommendation, can we modify that to say that the Board of Selectmen would do that at the advisement of the, with, with the advised, I, of the Board of Finance?
Well, it's up to you, not me. I mean, yeah.
No, I'm asking if there's, there's any reason we can't do that.
No, there's not. So you wanna change that? Uh, that makes, that makes sense.
Anybody else have any comment on this?
It's probably what would happen anyway, but you're right. No ban against it.
Right.
So should the word town be changed? It should, it say the Board of Selectmen must implement a substitute budget, you know, under the guidance or, uh, you know, in, I mean, should we change the word town to Board of Selectmen?
Selectmen?
Well, under advisement from the Board of Finance?
Would be, wait a minute.
That sounds correct.
Because I have no problem with that and I hope to God we never have to do it.
Yeah, you could add some words in there that uh, I could, I could throw in there, sure.
Okay, so why don't we do that and then send that back?
We're gonna get it exactly right. Let me just say this, um, you, you haven't voted on the uh, the issue that presented by the bifurcation yet.
No.
For one, for one thing. And um, you need to have a motion on that one and also on this one. For this one, I think what you wanna do is pass it with a change that you just, uh, Adrian recommended.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we want to review the last item before we, we vote on all these things? I think that's what we should do.
Okay.
Let's get this over with. So this is under item two, under the agenda. The following language shall replace section one oh, seven oh one C in its entirety. Seven oh ones.
That is actually, that is actually item three. There, there's a, there's a numeration problem on the copy we have.
You know, I'm just letting everyone.
And the preceding item that we just talked about is item two.
Yeah, so.
The bifurcation, item one.
So section seven, section seven oh one C qualifications compensation. The town administrator, this is the charter as currently written. The town administrator shall be chosen by the Board of Selectmen exclusively on the basis of executive, technical and administrative qualifications, character, educational background, training certification and professionally related experience. Educational, educational training must include a minimum of a baccalaureate degree. The town administrator shall devote full working time to the duties of the office. To be replaced with, the town, the, the town administrator shall be chosen by the Board of Selectmen exclusively on the basis of executive, technical and administrative qualifications, character, educational background, training certification and professionally related experience. The town administrator shall devote full working time to the duties of the office. It therefore removes, educational training must include a minimum of a baccalaureate degree.
Well done.
Discussion.
Got it right.
I can read. My, my baccalaureate, my baccalaureate degree has not failed me yet.
Despite, despite your baccalaureate degree.
Despite my background, yes.
Baccalaureate degree. You got it right.
I mean, I, I, well, I understand George Elliot's concern. I think any Board of Selectmen is going to um pick the appropriate candidate for the position. And if that candidate does not have uh, a baccalaureate degree, I don't think it should, it should stop it. I mean, I would think, you know, I look at, and I'm not sure Hebron's town administrator has a baccalaureate degree, but I know he was in the Public Works Department and he moved from Public Works to the town administrator's position. Um, that type of person with um hands-on experience in dealing with the day-to-day um, issues related to a public works department would be a potential candidate for a community like Andover down the road and uh, I'm not sure that, that that person may have went to college, may not have gone to college. I don't think it would stop them from being a good town administrator.
Jeff, I just have a couple of comments on it. You know, it's, it's a lot of these companies. I mean, I worked for a company that used to require a bachelor's degree for certain positions. And they've kind of lightened up on that. And um, you know, now it's, should possess a bachelor's degree or equivalent experience. Um, so you know, just because you went to college doesn't make you, you know, I mean, we, we are first town administrator, had a master's in municipal management and we know, so you know, I, I really don't wanna overlook the candidate based on, based on experience. We may have a really experienced candidate, very smart, and maybe just not have a bachelor's degree, but has equivalent experience, so. I don't know if we can work that into the charter revision or not, but uh,
I have no.
My suggestion.
I have no problem with removing it, because it doesn't stop someone from a baccalaureate degree from applying. It just doesn't limit someone who doesn't.
Saying should, should have a bachelor's degree or equivalent experience. So I'm just throwing it out there.
Somebody wants to make that motion, that's fine. This is the.
Say, say the change you wanna make again?
Just saying, he's just saying should, so would leave it as it's currently written, and educational training should, not must include, should include.
A bachelor, a bachelor's degree or equivalent experience.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're, I think we're pretty good as a hiring committee to.
I would, I would, I would second that.
Okay. So how about we make a motion on this one? Cause this one has the least amount of
Yeah.
negativity toward it. So Jeff Murray, will you just make a motion that changes that sentence? So.
What section are we talking about? I don't have it in front of me.
Uh, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Um, uh, so this is item two on the final draft report. Uh, we're recommending that the motion is that the original section seven oh one C qualifications compensation be modified by the Charter Revision Commission. Only changing educational training should remove the word must and replace with should include a minimum of a baccalaureate degree and then add or.
In parentheses or equivalent experience.
Or equivalent experience. I was trying to look at how they wrote it currently. Yeah, so the motion is to replace the word must with should to the second sentence in section seven oh one C and add to that or equivalent experience. That would be our recommendation. Someone wanna second that so we can go on?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that item? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Hopefully we made Mr. Elliott a little bit happier with that request. So now let's go through the motions for the remaining other three items that are here. So Scott, there was a change to item four, right?
Number four, right.
And what was that? Let's, let's get that motion out there just on four.
I, I motioned to approve the Charter Revision Commission changes to the charter except for on number four, the removal of the resident trooper program.
So.
That gets rid of two and four.
That gets rid of two and four, or three and four.
Three and four, three and.
Four, three and four. Um, does somebody wanna second that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And uh, I'll do number uh, two, Jeff, too.
Hold on, hold on for a second.
We have to discuss and vote.
So we're gonna discuss that one. So basically the request is to remove the section that says police service such as the resident state trooper program from that revision. Right? Just so we're all clear and listen to this, that's what the motion is really requesting is to remove police service such as the resident state trooper from that section. Okay.
And what you wanna do is to make it a four vote item?
Well, is that item still in the charter anywhere?
No.
No, I don't think so. It's gonna have to be added as a separate item. It can be done. I just need to know exactly what you want.
Okay, so Scott revised the motion to eliminate that section from their current draft and that they're required to add a section, or we'll do a second motion. So let's do this motion, get this motion out of the way to remove police service such as the resident state trooper program. So it was proposed by Scott Person, seconded by Jeff Murray. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so four, four nothing. Um, now we should make a motion to request the Charter Revision Commission to look at the resident state trooper program. So Dennis, how should we phrase this one?
You can just take it right out of the charter. I think somebody said that before. You know, the, the, you wanna make it a four vote requirement to remove it. Or a four vote requi- the other, the way it was before was, I believe, a four vote requirement.
No, it's, no, it's not, it's not addressed in the charter currently.
It's addressed.
It's not addressed.
It's addressed in the charter that the town may, may use the services of the, of the um, the state trooper, the resident state trooper program. That's how it is. There's no four.
Okay, that's all you want. That's all you want, right?
I think, I think we should keep it a budget item. I actually think it should be a budget item.
Exactly.
That's what I heard before.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Alright, so you wanted, you wanted just to say that the town can uh, address the uh, police, uh, have police service provided by the uh, resident trade state trooper program.
It already, it already says that, so I, we wanna probably just pull out that notation of four, of, of, you know, three votes and just pull out the, pull out the state trooper out of that section.
And put it somewhere else.
It's already in there somewhere else.
So where is it?
It's in that section at, it's in section B seven.
Oh, oh, that section in there?
Yeah.
So you're gonna, okay, alright, alright.
Can I just say something? It is in section seven zero two. Item L, so if we revise what we wrote and just do section A and leave that exactly as it reads in the current charter and make it part B of seven zero two. So we're leaving it in and we're identifying all of the other positions. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, don't be sorry, Carol. Thank you.
Good job, Carol.
Alright. Okay, very good.
Okay, now we gotta do two, Jeff.
We have to vote on that?
We voted on that. We voted on the removal. We're not doing anything additional related to this thing. We're gonna leave it as Carol has, it's seven oh two L.
Okay, understood.
I mean, seven oh two L just sits there, just so we're all clear, seven oh two L says police service, the town may utilize the services of the resident state trooper program.
Okay. We'll make it, make it make sense in, in that sense. I think Carol's got it right.
Okay. Alright, and now.
Somebody taking minutes, somebody taking minutes for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, cause we need to have the votes. Who voted, who voted yes, who voted no?
It's recorded, Dennis.
Okay, good. Oh, that's right.
Okay, so now.
Technology that's happened.
You know, now.
It's a virtual meeting, that's right.
I, I, I like it. It's all the, always recorded. You can always go back.
I didn't have to get in my car and drive to handle.
That's right. So, okay, so now we're on to um, we have our last.
We have to vote on two, the changes. I'm gonna read it.
I thought we voted on that.
No.
We talked about it.
Scott Person's the new chair. I love it.
I'm confused, two or what? I'm looking at two going, the town administrator should be chosen by the Board of Selectmen exclusively on experience. And we talked about this. We voted on that one.
Oh, no, two is the, uh, that's three.
Under the advisement of the Board of Finance and changing the town to Board of Selectmen.
Number three.
Okay. Scott, make the motion on that one.
Okay, I motioned to approve the Charter Revision Commission's changes to the charter except for a number two.
Just, just section eight oh three G.
Yeah, we, we add to the end of that section adding under advisement of the Board of Financing, Board of Finance and changing the town to Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so we should sit there and say replace the town with the Board of Selectmen under advisement of the Board of Finance. Must.
With the advising consent, yeah.
Yeah.
Of the Board of.
Is that acceptable, that wording? So replace the town with the, I'll make the motion, section eight oh three G. The second line of that section, replace the town with the Board of Selectmen under advisement of the Board of Finance.
I'll second that.
I wouldn't, I, can we change under to with the advisement?
Sure.
Thank you.
So it's going to say, it's gonna replace town with the Board of Selectmen with advisement from the Board of Finance. That's my revised motion. Scott, you still second?
Sure.
Adrian, do you approve?
Yeah.
Okay, let's all vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so since we voted on that one, I'm assuming that we're going to vote on the first one and the last one, which is the bifurcation issue.
Right, there were no changes to that.
Okay. So someone make a motion.
I, I'm motion to approve number one on the draft report.
Section eight oh three D.
Yep. Your second?
I'll second that.
Jeff Murray is seconded. Further discussion on this? Okay. Just as a discussion purpose, I just, I, I understand the logic. I just think it still brings, it never, it's never a, you know, we have to get to a point within our government and with our groups that we work together more. We have to do a better job of it. I don't necessarily know that this is leading us down this road. I understand the technical side of it, but I don't sit there and agree with the. Makes us.
I mean, Jeff. I mean, Jeff, if you're gonna make a statement, then, then give us a solution.
I'm gonna, I'm going to. I made it, Adrian. Do you have a problem with that?
No, I just want the solution that if you're saying that we shouldn't do this, or you don't know that the solution. I'd love to hear what the.
I, I actually, I actually think it's gonna make us work closer together to get a budget that's gonna pass the first time, to be honest with you.
Jeff, it's not, Jeff's gonna call that spin, so be careful what you say.
Yeah, you could spin it any way you want.
So Jeff, uh, do you, I mean, listen, if you feel like there's a way to. To better this conversation, I'm.
I, I wish I had that way, Adrian. It would be a totally better society.
But do you have, do you have any, any idea how to address this differently?
Yes, the way that I would address it is the Board of Education and the Board of Finance and the town will all come together and have one set of budget parameters. And everybody would follow the same guidance and, and the information would be the same across every group. That's how I would ask for it to happen.
That, that's ideal. That's, that's what we're looking for, Jeff. That's what we're looking.
If this forces that to happen, then great.
Yep, and I, that's what I asked for last year, Jeff.
Now, I know, Jeff, I totally, I understand what, that this board, listen, this board is, works pretty well together. And I understand what the logic is to get. We're trying to get to. And, and if this happens, great. I just hope, right? I really don't like the negative discourse. I, I would, I would rather not have a negative discourse, but sometimes you have to have negative discourse to make people do things in an appropriate manner, so.
Well, I think the other part of this, Jeff, I, I think this is the part that. We as a board sometimes get stuck behind. Doing things that maybe we're not a hundred percent in favor of. We, we understand there's a solution. We don't know that this is the right solution. But we have to try to. Take what the populace wants us to do. In this case, we had about two thirds that wanted it one way and a third that wanted it another, so. It, so you have a pop, you have a, a, a sort of clear voter majority in one direction. So sometimes our job as a board isn't necessarily to implement. Everything we believe. I mean, we're, we're elected by the same people that voted on this budget, right? And then voted on, and voted on this question. So our job is to take. What they're asking for and implement it in a way that, that is workable. Meaningful and hopefully will result in a, in a positive outcome.
Exactly.
Not, it's not always gonna be what we want. You know, I mean, how many times does, do we go through the effort of spending, you know, hours and hours and hours in a meeting to get something done? And then it goes to the public and they kill it. And like, wait, this is what you wanted. You want the roads fixed. We voted to fix the roads. Now you don't want it, like, you know, so. There is, there is, and candidly, we don't know that this is gonna pass. But we've done our due diligence. We've done what the, the majority has asked for.
Public asked for, exactly, Adrian.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna let the public vote on it.
Now that it's out there, now the public gets a second say on it and say, well, this is what you asked for. If you really want it. Or you really don't want it, now's the time to show up and vote accordingly.
Okay, I, I, I understand that and I, I don't have. Well, listen, I, if, if every. If every board or public entity worked, you know, at least I know this board works together and, and we don't always sit there and fight. For the last nail on our side. I mean, we actually. Do pretty well. Uh, and I, and Adrian, and I don't have a problem.
Jeff, my, my only point in questioning you was simply that if the, if you did have some ideas, crazy as it may be or whatever. That you, you bring it out in public, cuz I would.
I only have a logical idea that I've expressed to, to every. Everybody that needs to hear it, come up with your budget in an appropriate fashion and give everybody all the information. Listen, we have proven as a board that if you share more information, you get more done because then, well, you're being. Completely transparent. Everybody hates the word transparent. I get it. But we have done a reasonably good job of being transparent and there's a reason why. The money that was requested got approved because we're transparent and, and Eric and the, the town employees. Do a great job of. You know, showing that something's getting done. It's not like it was in the past where nothing got done. We're asking for more money. And we're proving that certain things can get done. It's not always positive. It's not always popular. Listen, it's not popular. No one wants to spend money. So.
Nope.
You, you either do it or you die, so. And then transparent. I don't necessarily know that that's the case across every. Everything that we're talking about here. So if you gotta bifurcate, bifurcate. But then again, personally, if we're gonna bifurcate. We should ask that, the, the, uh, the. Charter Revision Committee to get rid of the town meeting because I a hundred percent agree with you that those meetings allow a certain group of people to have a. An inordinate amount of power just for showing up to something that the rest of the community doesn't. I would get rid of the town meeting. I would go right to referendum. I'd let everybody vote and have at it. So.
I mean, one thing, one thing I think everybody's thinking is the school budget's gonna fail. I mean, we could go to bifurcation. Both budgets could still fail.
Right.
It's, it's, it's a possibility. I mean.
I, I, I will.
Is that a possibility?
Alright, so can we vote, can we vote on your motion, Jeff?
Uh, sure. I didn't make the motion, Jeff.
And then I, I'd like to.
Scott made the motion. Scott made the motion and Jeff seconded it. I just commented. I gave my spin.
Well, we had our discussion. That's, that's. The discussion.
I, I gave my spin. I just don't want, I, I would rather everybody, everybody get along and get what needs to get done, done. And, you know, give a little bit and get a little bit. It's all you gotta do. So, alright, so since we're all done discussing and I'm done with my spin, Adrian, and I apologize, let's vote on this. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, none.
I would, I would like to make a motion since I'm hearing that there may be support for it. That we ask the Board of, ask the Charter Revision Commission. If it is feasible to eliminate the town meeting. And go directly to referendum with a budget once, once it's passed by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. And I think that would be a great balance if we're gonna bifurcate. Because then it eliminates the small majority control.
Dennis, is that possible? How often can you have a Charter Revision Commission?
Well, no, I'd like to do it in this one.
Done.
This is going back to the Charter Revision Commission anyways, cuz we asked for some small changes. Can we, can they just strip that out? Is that possible? And let's give town.
You can do it. You, you can definitely do it now. You know, you have, you have the final authority.
So, so if we ask to have it done, there has to be two different sets of this because there has to be, what happens? I, I just ask everybody, like, I would be okay going to town meeting. We may lose that one. Because of the people who vote, so.
I, I would still have the town meeting now and actually, you know, review the budget and then, but just eliminate the voting part of it. We still let, still review the budget, just like we've always done.
Yes, you still have a budget review. You just don't have, but, but the budget going to referendum has nothing to do with that, that, that town meeting. We still have a town meeting, but there's no vote at that town meeting. It's a presentation.
So you strip out the vote. You have the town meeting for information.
The budget automatically goes to refer.
So it automatically goes to refer.
Right.
I have no problem with that. There are some assumptions of.
I think, but I think that's a fair balance. It eliminates the small, the small control issue.
Okay. Somebody make a motion to that because.
I, I just made that motion.
I mean, when's the last time in a public meeting that actually something was proposed to be removed and actually was removed?
Last year, multiple times.
But whenever it was removed, Adrian.
Yes, it was.
Which one?
The, the, the school budget got caught on that. It was cut.
At town meeting?
Yep. Not, not excessively, but it was cut. And the years before that, we, every, I, I think every year that we've had a contentious budget, it's, it's always the state, you know.
Yeah, but Adrian, they were cut, they were cut and then, then it failed at the town meeting.
Yep, the point is.
They never went to referendum, so.
Point is, this eliminates that, that, that sort of round robin.
That, just that going back and forth.
Right, it eliminates the round robin and lets it get to the, the voters as a whole to make them, you know, cuz. A lot of parents can't show up to those meetings because, you know, you're putting your kids to bed at seven o'clock, you know?
And your kids, I, I, and I have a kid, I have an eight year old too, and he, he doesn't wanna go to a town meeting and sit there.
Right, and, and you have parents that work others, you have people that work, that work shifts that can't get there and, you know, and then at the same time, you also have seniors. That don't wanna come out at seven o'clock because it's getting dark out or, or what have you, and, and, and they're not comfortable driving at night for a variety of reasons, so. I think it, it's, it hurts the populace as a whole, not just one side of the other, so.
Alright, uh, um, who's seconding this?
You gonna, did you make a motion for official motion?
So I may, I make a motion. I'll clarify that. I will make a motion that we remove the. Uh, requirement for a, a, a budget, a, a, a budget, a town meeting budget vote. And that the bu- the town budget once passed by the Board of Selectmen. To the Board of Finance and the Board of Finance to the, what, that we'll go directly from the Board of Finance to a town vote. A referendum, sorry for clarification, referendum.
So your motion is to hold the town meeting for informational purposes and that the.
But the, but the, once passed by the Board of Finance, the town budget will go to referendum within ten days. Or in ten days, how's that?
Okay.
Which is actually how most towns do it now, so.
Well, there's still some back and forth, but yes.
There is a little bit back and.
It is, it is going in that direction, so.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Any further comment on that request?
And the terminology.
I'm sorry.
Terminology that we, will be within ten days. That's.
I don't think anybody seconded it yet, Jeff.
Mr. McGuire, why don't you second that?
I'll, I'll second it.
Pass on the, your, your idea.
It is my idea.
Does this include the, uh, the bifurcation or not?
Yes.
Okay, that's, this is an amendment to that, to add something.
Yes, yep.
Alright.
I mean, so in essence, so in essence, the bifurcation occurs immediately after the first referendum if it's a failure.
Yep.
Right, right. That's what it seems like.
Yes, so that would eliminate the, the, the.
Second town meeting, the second town meeting.
Yep. But again, I think this gives a balance to that bifurcation. I like that a lot, actually.
Okay, since I seconded it, is there any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So Dennis, we need to get those two, uh, the, and, and Carol, we're gonna get those items from the minutes over to.
Yeah, let me just say this, um. The meeting that we're, we're planning on maybe having tonight with the Charter Revision Commission. Has to be postponed.
Correct.
Because the changes all have to be in writing. And I'll have to go over them and, uh, we just can't do that tonight.
Okay.
But we can do that at, at, as an item in the early part of your meeting on July eleven. Your next Board of Select meeting.
And, and just so.
Right from there.
Dennis, just so, uh, you know, everyone under proceeds that, at the town meeting for the budget only, there is no vote. If there's other town meetings that are required by the charter for.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
That there's votes at these town meetings, but at the budget, there would be no vote.
I, I'm, I'm clear on that ma- mainly because that's what we do in Wyndham. And let me tell you, about five people show up. Just saying that, just saying.
Well, it gives the opportunity, it, it gives the opportunity for us to record a presentation and present it online as well, so.
That's, you might have, uh, lots of people show up here. I don't know. But that's, I just wanted to, I had to tell you that. So. Okay. So this should be the last meeting of the night.
Correct.
Okay.
And I will, I will work with Carol and we will get together and we will come up with the language that. I think that Carol thinks that you came up with tonight.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, now, well, there was no, uh, public speak on the. On the agenda. So. I apologize and the next agenda, we'll make sure that we post that up so that you guys get a chance to speak at the end of this, or I would change it and. Dennis, before I go, since you are the town attorney, is there any, and is there any negative requirement if I allow the public to speak?
Well, public speak is not a right. You had it on the agenda as an item in the beginning of the meeting and you, I thought you were gonna have, move it to the end, but then I. I said, I thought that would be, uh. Wrong because this is a special meeting. So there's no public speak, but, but those who wanna, this is still in play, all of it. And, uh, you have to meet with the Charter Revision Commission. That meeting will take place at your meeting. Your Board of Selectmen meeting on the eleventh of July. And anybody who wants to speak out on, on what's happened tonight is gonna be able to do it then.
They will, they will. That's great. Does any, do any of the other members of the Board of Select mind if I go around quickly and let the people that are on this meeting speak?
No, no, sir.
No, no, I'm fine with it. Totally fine with it.
Jay, you're up.
Hey, thanks, guys. Uh, thanks for letting me speak. Um, you know, just again, you know, certainly just listening to you all debate this and, and talk it through. Um, you know, I have a really new appreciation for what you're going through and all the different. Um, points of view and everything that you're trying to work through, so, um, you know, kudos to all you folks. I just wanted to say again that, um. You know, when it's coming to this school budget, it's, it's a particularly divisive. Topic in a very divisive time for our country and that's unfortunately trickled all the way down to our small town. Um, I think that you're, I know that you're in a tight spot. Um, but I think that there is a, there is a very vocal. Um, minority where this, this budget, this, the town, the school budget. Whether they deserve it or not, has become very emotional. And if there's any way before you, you bifurcate. To try and, try and take the opportunity to, to turn that emotion down a little bit and let it turn into something more productive. I think in the long run, it's going to be very helpful for the town and for the school. Um, because right now, the, the emotions are trumping any kind of, um, financial fiscal conversation. Um, so, you know, that's, that's all I have to say. Um, you know, I might be wrong. But I do feel that, um, this is going to become, um, a tool, bifurcation meaning. To, um, to, to hammer away at those grievances towards, you know, whoever is on that school board that, that they're disagreeing with.
Okay, alright, thank you. Diane Greiner.
Yes, again, thank, thank you all. This, this is a hard job and I'm glad you're all doing it for us. Thank you. All the, I had a question as to when does this, um, become implemented?
It has to, it, it has to go to vote in November, so one of the reasons that we were. One of the reasons that this was so important, any changes to the charters, you have to get a certain percentage of the town to vote. I, i- if a certain percentage of the town doesn't vote. At, at, on the charter, then it doesn't, it, even if it passed, it wouldn't count. Right, so it goes by your last, your last major vote and what percentage that was. And I don't know the exact details, but it's, it's fairly substantial, so. Really, the only way to pass charters is in governor's elections or presidential elections. The in-between cycles, you'll never pass it, so. Um, that's why it was important to do this in the timeframe that was, that we're looking at. Otherwise. Our next opportunity realistically would probably be the next presidential election.
Okay, so if it's on the November ballot, does it become effective immediately upon passing?
Yeah, I believe it would be, yeah.
Okay.
And it will be on the November ballot if it goes through. If it goes through the, the two, you know, the, the Charter Revision Commission and then us, and it has to get sent to the state for approval. And it has to be into them in September in order to be approved for it to be on the ballot in November. So.
Anything else, Diane?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Alright, Marcy Minor.
Marcy.
Hi, sorry. It always takes me a while to get unmute. So anyway, uh, thank you, you guys, um. I know the Charter Commission worked a long time trying to figure out, you know, happy medium and how to solve the problem. And, uh, I think they did a really good job. You guys had a lot of good discussions, so appreciate your, your efforts and everything that you do. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Liz Lowkite.
Catching the ball low, Jeff. Lowkite. Um, anyway, just wanted to, um, thank you all for the discussion. I really think. Um, it shows that everyone is, um, working together and I really appreciate it. I know it's not an easy topic. Um, but just wanna, uh, thank you all. Appreciate y'all.
Louise, good work.
Uh, no comment except, um, thank everybody for their efforts.
Uh, no comment, except, um, thank everybody for their efforts.
Thank you. Uh, Joanne Ebert? Okay, Karen Mador? No?
Lost it, thanks.
Carol Lee, we'll, we'll give the committee members that didn't talk a chance. You good?
I am all set. Thank you very much. We'll work on this and get this done.
Alright, thank you, Carol. Alright, any other, uh, any other issues for any of the members before we adjourn? So we're not gonna move on to our next meeting, so we're gonna wait until the Charter Commission comes back to us with our requests and then we'll have to schedule another meeting. Dennis, actually, can we, um, our next, our next regular scheduled meeting is, is what, the tenth?
Eleventh.
No, it's the eleventh, um, but I, as I said before, uh, Jeff, um, you can put the session with the Charter Revision Commission and the Board of Selectmen right on your, your Ju, uh, July eleventh agenda. Have it at the beginning, at the early part of the meeting and then move on from there.
Carol, is that.
See what happens?
Is that possible for your commission to meet and get this, these changes processed?
I will check. Karen is on right now Mondays. I know we would lose. I don't think we will have Don then. Oh, no, Don can come on Monday, so yes. We would be able to.
Okay. But I'm assuming that you have to meet before that.
Yes, we will, yeah.
Alright, can you let us know before we get the agenda out, whether we have to do that or we have to schedule another meeting? But it would be great if you could do it on a regular scheduled day. That'd be great. Alright.
We can, right, Karen?
Yeah.
Karen's giving me a thumbs up. Perfect.
Okay, uh, anything else? No, uh, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at eight thirty six PM.
Okay. Second it, second it, second it. I'll second. Fine, Adrian, I'll second. I'll spin. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everybody, for attending.
Goodnight, folks.
Goodnight.